This is a meeting of the Revere City Council, Council of a Whole. Can everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So today we have before us a representative for the Recycle Bank.
Good evening, everyone. Ready to start? Okay. My name is Summer Brook. I'm the account manager for the city of Revere, Massachusetts for the Recycle Bank program. So this evening, I just wanted to take about 15 minutes of your time to give you an update about the Recycle Bank program and its impact that it has had on the Revere residents and then talk about what the future will look like with the Recycle Bank program in the city of Revere. So, an executive summary of what we'll be going over today. The city of Revere and Recycle Bank have partnered successfully to increase recycling rates by over 200% and positively engage and educate its residents. Recycle Bank continues to invest heavily in local engagement events as well as in its digital platform to further educate, engage, and inspire Revere residents. In the words of one of your residents, quote, "It was one of the best things about moving to Revere. I'm able to recycle and I've scored great goodies like iTunes codes." And that came from a Revere resident who's also a Recycle Bank Facebook fan. And lastly, the Recycle Bank contract is up for renewal on June 30th, 2013, and we do believe there's a great opportunity here to continue to educate residents from the city of Revere. Now, I'm going to briefly go through a review of what it is Recycle Bank is offering, the city of Revere. What we do for communities, we leverage a comprehensive platform to change residents' behavior. How do we do that? We offer incentives so to both national and local reward partners. People are able to accrue Recycle Bank reward points through their curbside recycling and then use those points as they wish at local and national reward partners. In addition, we work on awareness and education. That's both online and offline. We're through social media, emailing our website, and also through direct mail and at community events. Measurement and data, we're able to capture recycling data for the city of Revere so that you may use that in your planning of the future as well, as well as report how many people are participating in our program and how they are using the program. And finally, community engagement. We have a number of exciting new ideas that we're going to implement in the future, and that's something we'd like to talk about implementing here in Revere as well. How do we do it? Just another brief overview, a number of things we'll do to try to reach your residents and educate them wherever they happen to be. That's direct to residents through mailing, through events, that's through community events, and again, that's online. We run a number of green education campaigns through recyclebank.com. We also offer challenges and prizes, all centered around green education, including recycling. And in addition to that, we also reach out to residents through email, social media, banner ads, and other online channels, including the Revere website itself. To give you a look at how the member journey will look for your Revere residents, residents were introduced to the program when we rolled out here. Next, they sign up for a free account via the phone or on our website. From there, residents simply recycle and will start to earn their Recycle Bank points. They get to use those points as they see fit to get great rewards from, again, national and local partners. And then what does that mean? It means they're recycling more to earn more of those points. Taking a little bit of a deeper look into what exactly the Recycle Bank program has done for Revere. So since the implementation of single-stream recycling and the Recycle Bank program, Revere residents are recycling triple what they were recycling before the program. If you look at this graph, we start with the last three years of the program. So in year one, we took a baseline, which is basically how much people were recycling on a yearly basis before we rolled out the Recycle Bank program. And for our purposes, we use this baseline to kind of, as a jumping off point, to see what our impact has looked like for the city of Revere. So as you can see, at 120 pounds per household per year, it skyrocketed. For the first year, it was up to 367 pounds. In year two, we were able to further improve that by 394. And then over the past year, we've had another modest increase. Something to keep in mind, at this time, in most cities throughout the United States, recycling is either stagnant or it's actually declining. The fact that we're able to increase in any amount the recycling for residents of Revere is a huge feat, and it's a great win for both of us. Here's a look at the value that your residents are seeing in our program. So as I said, they're able to use these rewards to then go get coupons and discounts from certain reward partners, both nationally and locally. To give you a look, we started recording this data as of January 2011. So that's since January 2011, residents in Revere who are members of the Recycle Bank program have saved close to $100,000 simply by cashing in rewards for Recycle Bank points. In addition to that, we calculate a co-spend value. The co-spend value we look at is, for example, if we offer a $5 off 20 to go into a store and get $5 off if you spend 20, we'll calculate $5 as the savings that member realized and we'll calculate $15 as the co-spend they're putting back into the economy. So it's a very conservative estimate. As you well know, when you go thinking you're going to spend $20 to get your five off, you often end up spending 20, 25, 30, 35, because it's very hard to stick with just the 20. So we like to say this is a very conservative estimate, but the co-spend that Revere residents have put back into the economy is about $150,000 since January 2011. To further put that into context, how many rewards did they actually redeem? And that's about 11,500 rewards were redeemed for that value. So we recently, as of last June through July of 2012, we were very interested in knowing what Revere residents thought about the Recycle Bank program. Usually, you roll out a program, it's exciting at the beginning, everyone loves it, and we need to make sure that we continue to drive value to your residents, because that's what we're here to do, and continue to make an impact with them. So that being said, we ran a member survey, and we were able to survey over 200 Revere residents who are also Recycle Bank members. I'm going to go through a little bit of the outcomes of that survey to show you what exactly your residents think about this program. So, Revere Recycle Bank members highly value the Recycle Bank program. Recycle Bank is able to promote positive behavior change and amplify perception. A few of the numbers we were able to capture through this survey. Overall, close to 80% of members are very or extremely satisfied with Recycle Bank. Close to 80% say the Recycle Bank program provides high value to members and the community. Almost 90% would be unhappy if Recycle Bank were no longer available to them. And also, we create positive environmental impact. 90% say they recycle more since Recycle Bank launched, which obviously is evident in a tripling of their household recycling. Close to half report Recycle Bank has increased their knowledge about how to take actions to help the environment. We pride ourselves on constantly improving our digital platform so that we are always providing green education, recycling education, to our members. We're also increasing positive perception. So what does that mean? Almost 50% consider their town to be very or extremely environmentally responsible. That's important. How is a city received to their residents, correct? So about 50% of the Recycle Bank members do believe that Revere is very or extremely environmentally responsible. Over 50% give positive ratings to Recycle Bank's contribution to their city's environmental Just to give some further color, and you're able to read these at your leisure later, but they're just some quotes that we were able to capture from Revere residents. In addition to some of the digital outreach we do, like you saw a Facebook comment that they left for us, this was through the survey. Just a few of them. Why do people want to use Recycle Bank? Venus W, because it helps the environment and will improve the future of our planet, saves money and helps the environment. Here's a great one, I think, that talks about not only increasing people's recycling, but decreasing their trash. My trash went from three barrels down to one. I have pride in me and my community. So, just to give you some idea of how we are reaching your residents, you know how they feel about the program, you've seen the impact we've had on recycling, and now I want to give you a brief look at how it is we're creating this impact with your residents and why they value this program so much. Recycle Bank is always educating and engaging your residents, whether it's through email, social media, doing educational quizzes and pledges to take green actions, or doing digital campaigns over our website. We find where your residents are, whether that be through email, whether that be that they're on Facebook, or Pinterest, or Twitter, and we speak to them. And we're constantly putting out the green education, and I'll show a little bit later how we're actually doing dynamic topics for each month of this year to show a little bit, to give some variety to the green education other than just recycling. So just our website overview, we're able to message specifically to Revere residents. We do have a blog that is constantly offering your residents ways to live greener, ways to save money, ways to be environmentally conscious. And finally, as I said, we do have monthly campaigns that are often sponsored as well, which means we're able to amplify it even more and actually offer even more points for your residents to earn via our website. This shows you for 2013, these are the educational campaign topics that we will be implementing. We've already gone through three of them, aluminum, green schools, and Earth Month for the month of April, and we're currently on paper. So I'll show you a snapshot of what that looks like for your residents. And again, these topics are really meant to speak to the residents. We are their rewards program for curbside recycling. We want to make sure we have that messaging on there, which is why we'll talk about aluminum. How do you recycle it? Where does it come from? How can you better educate yourself on the better use of it? Same with paper, same with glass, same with water. Here's a screenshot of what our June education campaign looks like. A Fresh Approach to Paper, it's called, and we're raising awareness for the responsible use of paper. I put down here a tweet from the city of Revere. We offer each month, and each time we have a campaign, we offer social media copy so that you too can reach out to your residents in addition to anything we do. So it's simply a matter of copying and pasting. We provide all the design or creative that you would need to further help you educate your residents on green topics. For this one, members are actually able to earn up to, close to 300 points, just for going onto our website and learning about the responsible use of paper, where it comes from, taking pledges that they're going to use paper more responsibly. This is in addition to any points they're earning simply for their recycling every Another way we're reaching them, which is a great idea for the city of Revere, is I know you have a number of cleanup events, e-waste collection, and other cleanliness events. We're able to put some dynamic content into emails that we send out each month. So working closely with the city, I'm able to put in reminders of events to tell our members to go to in the city of Revere. If there's a big milestone, we reached a certain amount of tonnage for recycling, and you want to encourage people to do it more, if you let us know. Again, we put it in, and it's just one more channel that we're reaching your residents in addition to anything you're already doing. Like I said, we like to be where your residents are. So this is a point-earning opportunity that we did on Pinterest. If anyone's familiar with Pinterest, it's basically a virtual pin board where you can put up ideas for activities, for crafts, for green ideas of how you want to green your home. And we encouraged our Recycle Bank members to pin some of our green ideas, and then they had the chance to win up to 3,000 Recycle Bank points. So once again, we want to educate them when they're on our website, and if they're not on our website yet, we want to get to where they are, whether it's Pinterest, Facebook, Twitter, through email. So that's a synopsis of kind of what we've done to this point. As I said, the contract is up for renewal on June 30th, 2013. We do believe we have a great chance to grow with the city of Revere. It's clear that Revere residents are very interested in keeping Recycle Bank as a program. So I just want to show you what we're looking forward to for the next five years and what you can expect from us. So, we will, once again, will increase presence at city events. Residents will now earn Recycle Bank reward points for participating in city-run green events. So that's as simple as a phone call saying, we've got an event coming up. They now have point codes that you can hand out and further encourage people to come out and participate in these events, and Recycle Bank can have more of a presence to show people that we really want to support their green actions, online, offline, at the curb recycling, or in their communities. Further investment in green education for Revere residents. Targeted messaging through email, Recycle Bank website, Facebook, Twitter, newsletters, direct mail, creating a better-informed and environmentally-conscious population. Once again, in a partnership with the city, we're happy to supply information and education for any newsletters or emails that you have going out. Use us as that resource, because that's what we're here for. We continually improve our digital platform for green education. We're constantly gathering member feedback and updating and enhancing our digital offerings. Further increase recycling participation. Obviously, Revere residents have done a lot over the past few years, increasing their recycling rate, but we're always going to want to improve that. So we will further hope to increase that recycling participation by deepening our partnership with you, the city. And partner with the city to develop innovative and creative ways to reach Revere residents. As you know, nobody knows Revere residents like you guys, so we love to have a true partnership so that we're able to work with you on how you best believe we should be reaching your residents in addition to anything we're doing already. Thank you. Are we taking questions, or just that?
Thank you so much for presenting before us today. This program's obviously a great program that's done a lot, so I'm really happy to see those results. Are there any questions on the council? Councilor Creggio?
Thank you, Councilor Janino. I want to thank you first for coming before us. This is an excellent program for the city of Revere, and the people now are more aware of recycling, and they're getting rewards out of it at the same time. So this is a great program, plus we have a chance to save, you know, tonnage far as rubbish removal, which we had to pay more, a lot more for tonnage years ago, a few years back. My question is, how is Revere basically compared to Everett, Marlboro, and Chelsea recycling? As Revere seems like, it seems like Revere is kind of ahead of most of the other towns.
What I can tell you, to be honest, I don't have recycling numbers for those communities that we're not participating in. What I can tell you is that Revere outperforms the average city of its size that doesn't have some sort of program in place to try to keep people participating in recycling.
All right. Tia, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Quinasso?
Thank you, Madam President. It certainly seems to me, since we've got these new recycling bins on wheels, that the program has really taken off. I was just telling my colleagues a week or so ago about, when I travel throughout the city, when it's trash day, and I see so many bins out there, it shows that the program's working. I mean, I have never seen this before. And I attribute it, really, it's the same mindset, it's to the facilities that they put the trash in. The recycling bins are doing the job that they were intended to do. It seems like the green things that they had, they had to carry out. For seniors and for everybody, that was very, very inconvenient. But this program, I say with pride, is working, and it's working well, and it's evident. You just travel the community and see it, you know? You don't have to be a rocket scientist to see that this program is in full force and working well, and we attribute that to our good residents. But I give a lot of credit to whoever thought of the concept of putting this bin on wheels and allowing that to be pushed out to the curbside for pickup. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I just think this program will grow. Thanks for your help, and the city of Revere really appreciates that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilor Haas?
Well, thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you and the Recycle Bank. You're doing a tremendous job, without question. I don't want to be too redundant, but again, taking all of that waste out of our stream is extremely beneficial to the taxpayers.
Huge.
As you indicated, you know, the average now was one barrel per household, and that is tremendous. Whereas before, you may have two or three. This way, here, recycling takes one, trash going the rest goes takes another, so we save, without question. And I just hope the city becomes a little more forceful in really pushing the recycling. There's a lot of tenement homes in Revere who do not recycle, and I think we have to reach those people. Because as the diagram is presented here, it is without question a money saved for the taxpayers. So congratulations. I have 7,000 points. What are we doing?
Oh goodness. I could tell you a few things to do with them.
I'm not going to go in there for $5. Is there something more within the program?
What I can tell you is, we're constantly changing the rewards based on what people order to kind of make it more valuable. That's a lot of points. I might have to see what you could donate. I will say something. There is another program that we do with the schools. It's called Green Schools, and it allows schools, and I don't know if a school in the city of Revere has taken advantage, but we actually give them grants for green projects. And the way they raise money for those grants is through Recycle Bank points. So if there are people who have this many points, absolutely. It gives you a chance to donate them to your schools.
Keep us informed as far as that's concerned.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Nice to have you up there. I just want to say that recycling, it's been great. I've had two barrels probably since the beginning, and I, like Councilor Haas, I have around 7,000 points. Wow. And actually, I get yelled at. My wife, she finds I throw something in the wrong container, or I get yelled at. But I do. I have used it. I've had coupons from Outback, Texas Roadhouse, Bed and Beyond for my wife, used coupons. So there's a lot of good uses out of it. And I hope, you know, and I think, I think the problem is that I think that we probably need more containers, and if it does continue in the future, that we get more containers for people. Because I think they'll use them.
So you think recycling's going to continue to increase and to accommodate that, right?
Well, I think it'll increase without a doubt.
Absolutely. That'll definitely be a conversation to have about, as we move to the next five years, how we can accommodate increased recycling, which is a good thing.
Yes, actually, I would like to see it done every week instead of every two weeks. It would, I think it would increase the savings on the city with the recycling. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Councilor Penta?
Thank you, Madam President. Through your speak, I want to congratulate you also. I mean, since this came in, we had those red and green barrels, the little containers, whatever you want to call them, and it was ugly. I mean, you look up the street now, and it seems to me 90% to maybe higher, at least in my ward, on trash day, you know, you're riding around the street, and you just see them all the way down the street lined up. And I think Councilor Patch said it, there's people that don't have, maybe every week, I don't know what the cost would be, or if it would be a savings, because people are asking for an extra barrel. And you said it yourself, the decrease in the trash barrels, and that's because of the recycling. So I mean, you definitely see it working. The only thing I say to add to increasing the recycling is a little more education on exactly what can be recycled, because people don't realize 98% of the stuff you throw away can be recycled.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's basically just your swill, you can't recycle. I mean, years back, you had that thing out in your backyard, and you threw the swill, and how much is that? A little bucket like this. So I think if people realize what they can recycle, you'd probably need three of those barrels a week, and maybe have to pick up the recycling once a week if you did 100% of recycling. But I think Councilor Haas also said, is, you know, people that aren't recycling have to be educated to recycle, and maybe it's about time, with the rewards, also maybe penalizing those people, because they're affecting everybody in the city paying higher taxes on the waste. So that's something else to look into. But I want to commend you on your program, and hope it keeps going. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Great ideas.
Thank you, Councilor Penta. Councilor Riden?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and I agree with Councilor Patch. It is refreshing to see you sitting here, I have to say. In any case, and that's no aspersion on the President. I would agree with everything that's been said. I mean, this recycling program has really rocketed us into the future as far as the volume of recycling. I know personally that we, I recycle since we've been recycling, and I used to fill two of those little bins up every two weeks. But now, it's mostly probably one and a half on the average of those, because I have two recycling buckets for a three-member household. And we, conversely, we dispose of, I think, and this is the most important thing from the city's perspective, as far as money is concerned, a half a bag, a bag and a half, a kitchen bag and a half of disposable items. So that's a lot, that's a big difference. I have one question, though. Do you have any idea how many points are now in the bank throughout this city? In other words, how many unused points are there, recycling points? Is there any, do you have any figures on that?
Off the top of my head, I do not. It's definitely something we can collect, though. You're going to do something with them?
The reason I say that, because I echo Councilor Haas's sentiment. I know I've probably got a lot of points, I haven't even looked at them, and I don't use them. And frankly, while you were talking, I checked online, and I see that there are a lot of restaurants that I didn't expect, and that would be mostly what I would use them on restaurants. But one thing I did notice, that there were some restaurants from Revere, but there are not a lot of restaurants from Revere. I wonder if it would be not a bad idea to make some sort of a campaign to some of our more popular restaurants on Broadway to get them involved in the program, because I think they would actually, they would actually do well by it. I mean, the discounts are reasonable, they don't, they don't take a big bite out of the seller's profit, I don't think, and they tend to get people back in. And I think that's something that's, having been in the business, I've always found valuable to get, a good way to get return customers is to offer something to get them in the door. So the only suggestion I would make is, I would like to know how effective the reward program is at this point compared to, in other words, compared to the points redeemed, how many points are still in the bank? Because I would be willing to bet that most of the people in Revere have a lot more points than they realize, which are more valuable than they realize. Whether they donate them or use them themselves, I think it's probably a good idea to use them, because that's kind of like the third, the third spoke to this thing, getting businesses to, involved and getting people out to the businesses. Thank you. But it's an excellent program, and it's really been well, well worth it, and everything it's been advertised to be, at least as far as the recycling part is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I comment? Just want to give them an answer for a couple of those things, because you bring up some really great points. Looking at the future for the next, say, five years, definitely something we want to do is reach out again to some of the local businesses now that we really have a foothold in Revere, and they're probably a little more interested in participating with us. What I will say is endorsement from folks like you are really what helps us get into the door of some of these local businesses. So what we'll do is oftentimes go in with a representative of a city to say, it's a city program, we would love to have you on board. So definitely something that we should talk about and plan in the coming months to start recruiting some of those new businesses. I will also say, some people do rack up thousands and thousands of points, but actually, through our member surveys, what we found is, some people wear those like a badge of honor. They want to say, they want to be able to come to the council meeting and say, I have 10,000 Recycle Bank points, and they don't want the rewards. So for those that do want to use them, we definitely want them to know what value they carry. But I will say, there are some people that just like to hold that so that they can say, this is how much I've recycled. You know, it's kind of like a guiranya.
Well, I know that most of the city councils frequent, well, maybe frequent's a little strong. We attend the restaurants, we go to the restaurants in this area, and I know we'd be very happy to try to get you guys in the door to a lot of the places we go to.
Wonderful. We'll do that then.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Zimburo?
Thank you, Madam President. And it is refreshing to have you sitting up there. But she's the president tonight. Who's ever in that chair was president at the time, correct? All right. I like to, I like to think I know the rules up here. Thank you very much for your presentation. Very informative. I, like my colleague to my right, and my colleague over there, I've never used a point, so I'm sure I have thousands and thousands of points. And I would like to use them in the local restaurants, and we will do what we can to get this participation. And I think you're right. Now that we've got five years under our belt, people see, and people are really participating. We get calls for new bins all the time, and it's a wonderful program. I did, I had your counterpart, or I think it was one of the principals who came up here before, had her email, and I have a few seniors who are not computer literate and had asked me to check on some specific places that they used to do business with, and we're not accepting the recycle points again. So if you can leave me your card tonight, it would be helpful, because I know I'm going to see this particular gentleman soon, and he's going to ask me, what happened? Did you get my things back online? And unfortunately, I sent an email to somebody, but I never got a response, and it's probably because I'm dealing with old emails and so forth. So if you can leave your card, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
There are some seniors who really love to participate in the program, but they have pet places that they want to go to, and some of them are not on the program, and perhaps we can get them on the program and keep it going. But I'm hoping we're going to, the mayor's sitting right here, I'm hoping we're going to renew Recycle Bank's contract for the next five years. And again, thank you very much, and I think it's a great program. Revere was a Revere was a leader in recycling before Recycle Bank. Years, many, many years ago, we were one of the first communities to take on recycling. We had many volunteers, some of them no longer live in the city, but there were a lot of good people that participated and worked hard, and they gave up their Saturdays to work in a recycling area, and sort through cans and papers and so forth. And then we were one of the first communities to go to curbside recycling, and it was a natural progression to go to the Recycle Bank. So we, we're happy to see that this has regenerated that original interest in recycling that the people of Revere always had. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
That's great.
Thank you. And I know that Councilor Powers had a remark that he wanted to make as well, but we have another group that is, we're running about 15 minutes behind, so Counselor, if you don't mind.
I'll be, I'll speak very briefly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Janino. I just have, I have a comment and a question. Is there any chance down the road that, I mean, I've been recycling now for three, four years, and I'm wondering if perhaps these points would be good at Aer Lingus or something like that, if somebody wanted to take a trip? Airlines.
Currently, we don't have any airlines as our reward partners.
I didn't think so. But on a more serious note, the $90,598, does that reflect a reduction in our tipping fees at Resco?
Great question. So that $90,000 is strictly the rewards part of it. So that's the dollars that residents have saved by using their coupons and discounts with our reward points. So that's each household that goes and redeems their coupons and their rewards, that's how much they're saving. It's not kind of citywide.
This has nothing to do with our tipping fees?
That's not the tipping fees. Those are other figures that we can get into when we start the renewal discussions, and we can suss that out for you as well.
I'd be very much interested in that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Well, thank you so much for presenting before us this evening. Our mayor has a few words on the subject.
Yeah, just before, and I know we're running late, but I just want to say that I've had the chance to work personally with Recycle Bank on a couple of occasions down in my office. They have been extremely responsive to the city. The one big problem the city has right now is there's so many people looking to recycle that there's a shortage of barrels to send to people. So we oftentimes have to put people on a waiting list. But it has been a very, very successful program, and probably one of the more successful programs that we've, that we have developed here in the city. And as far as the tipping fees go, you'll see that we actually have, you know, as part of the transfers that we made this year, some of it came out of the trash pickup and disposal account. So we are seeing some real savings as a result of people taking more time and effort to recycle. As you know, there are communities around us that had to go to a pay-as-you-throw system, which is something that we've been fending off now for a long time. And if we continue to recycle at the pace that we are, we'll never have to even think about going to a pay-as-you-throw unless something really disastrous were to happen. So it really has been a real success for the city.
Thank you. And thank you again. I'd like to welcome our council president for joining us, and I'd also like to welcome a representative from Revere Cares.
Yes.
Madam President, thank you very, very much for allowing this conversation about our community health assessment go forward here this evening. It was really an extensive program. There was a lot of people, a lot of involvement between several different parties and our residents who took part in this. And I just want to give you a brief setup, and then I'll let the, the experts come up here and tell you all about it. But essentially, in late 2011, Mass General approached the city to talk about performing this community assessment, and asked the city if we would cosponsor this particular assessment with them, which we did. Several city departments participated, and along the way, the city assisted with not only the assessment, but the planning process as well. Today, Mass General is here, and you'll hear first from Leslie Aldrich. She's the Associate Director of the MGH Center for Community Health Improvement. She'll begin by talking about the assessment process. You'll then hear from Dr. Roger Przyzinski, Medical Director of the MGA, Revere Care Health Center, to talk about what was learned through this assessment. And then finally, you'll hear, you'll hear from Kitty Bowman from Revere Cares, who will talk about how we're going to address some of the major problems that were identified in this assessment. But I, you know, I have seen this, this presentation before, and, and, you know, have been privy to it, and it really is remarkable, the information that was learned through this assessment. They have, I just have to say, on behalf of the administration, and really on behalf of the residents of the city, we're very, very fortunate to have an institution like Mass General, and organizations such as Revere Cares, Revere on the Move. I mean, we've got so many great organizations that are really working towards making Revere a healthier, better place to live. So with that, Madam President, I will turn it over to you, and presumably you'll introduce Leslie Aldrich. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for coming to present before us, and I think this is a great opportunity for the community and for us to learn more about what you guys are doing, because I know it's a great program that you're operating, so I'm really excited. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor, for introducing us. Such nice words. So I just am here to tell you a little bit about the process, and I will go through this quick, because I know that you are running a little bit behind. Kitty's also passing out the health assessment report that we have just put together, and it will be online on the city and on Revere Cares' website. This is just a background about Mass General. I think everybody knows about Mass General, our presence in the community, how long we've been around. We're here, I work for the Center for Community Health Improvement. We've helped facilitate this assessment process with the backing of the mayor and collaboration of the community and Revere Cares. We've been around since 1995, the center, and we've been conducting health assessments since we started, and that's how Revere Cares came to be. As we know, health is largely determined by the social, physical, and behavioral environments in which we live. Healthcare actually in itself is not what keeps us healthy, it's the environments in which we live. So that's why it's important to do health assessments, so that we can get an honest and objective description of the community, and it helps to strengthen partnerships and collect data. And this year, it's also because of IRS and Attorney General guidelines. There's new IRS guidelines that require all hospitals to do these community health assessments in collaboration with communities every three years. So Mass General basically saw these, these new requirements from the IRS as an opportunity, and we turned to the CDC to help us guide our assessment process. As I said, we've been doing this since we started in 1995, but we wanted to collaborate with other communities and make it a little bit enhanced. So we chose a process called Mobilizing for Action through Planning and Partnerships. It's an assessment, it is a strategic planning process with assessments built into it. And the first phase is to organize and partner with the community, create a vision, collect data, and then prioritize and plan. So how we did this is we worked with Revere Cares, and we expanded their steering committee, and we made sure that it was representative of the community by adding all sectors of the community, and made sure that they were representative. The assessment committee's basic roles were to work with us on reviewing this assessment process, collect and review data, help determine priorities, analyze the data, interpret the data for us, and then come up with a plan. Here's just a couple of members on the slide of the assessment committee. Some are in the room right now. So thank everybody who's been part of this process. What we did to collect data, we had a community forum where we basically showcased data in poster format, and had people respond to the data. We also did a quality-of-life survey, which was basically web-based and print. It was in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic, and we collected 756 surveys. We did eight focus groups with diverse residents, and we, we heard from 84 different residents. And then we also looked at the public health data. Here's just a visual of how we presented the data at some of these forums. Right. So what did we learn? To get to the meaty part, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Przyzinski pretty soon, but just to give you a snapshot, the most important things for community residents are low crime, safe neighborhoods, good schools, and access to healthcare. That's how residents define a healthy community. There were many assets that were spoken about during these assessment committee meetings, basically that it was a friendly and welcoming environment here in Revere, it was diverse, great school system, lots of services for residents. It was a very robust conversation that we had about just the assets and how wonderful it was to live in this community. We also talked about the forces outside of our control that affect health, things to think about when we're doing strategic planning, which were the change in the population, housing, new residents and new people coming into housing, new leadership, there's a new mayor coming in, possibly new business in the casino, poverty, the physical environment in which we live, healthcare reform right now, thinking about that, and also the community resources, or lack of community resources due to the, due to the poverty and unemployment rates. So as we know, disease and mortality do define how healthy we are, and we know that cancer, heart disease, and diabetes are some of the biggest diseases and reasons for why people are dying, along with TB incidence higher in Revere and HIV/AIDS incidence right now. But this data alone doesn't tell us exactly what's going on in the community and what's behind these issues, and that's why these health assessments are important. So when we did the survey and we did the focus groups, we asked what were the top concerns for the community. Drug abuse, addiction, overdose, and alcohol was the number one concern across the board, and that was true in all the communities that we did these assessments, both in Chelsea and in Charlestown. Crime and violence was, was far, was right behind, especially with public safety, the feeling and perception of safety. Poor diet, inactivity, obesity, hunger, also important, along with mental health and the physical environment in which we live. And basically, the cleanliness of environment, that came out a lot in focus groups. So I'm going to turn it now to Dr. Przyzinski to talk to you a little bit more about the data and the highlights of the data.
Thank you.
Mayor Rizzo, honored members of the city council, thank you very much for allowing us here today. So this was really a tremendous effort, and I was very, very impressed by the wonderful participation of many different facets of the Revere community. Patients, people involved with government, with nonprofit institutions, our healthcare staff, and so forth. So this was really the most comprehensive piece of information, piece of assessment that I've seen in my 28 years in Revere regarding community health. So as Leslie already highlighted, you know, the big three in Revere are similar to the big three throughout the United States, diabetes, cancer, and heart disease. And cancer and heart disease are linked by one very strong preventable cofactor, and that's smoking. And so you'll see in our data that the incidence of smoking in Revere is higher than the state average. And so I know a lot of work has been done over the last 10, 20 years to decrease smoking in Revere. There's much more work to be done. Substance abuse came up very strongly in the survey and in the focus groups. And you can see from this data shot that basically 4.3 out of 5 was the highest score of any community health indicator that we looked at, and that came through with drug and alcohol abuse in Revere. Some of the backup statistics, so 62% of Revere high school students have already drunk some alcohol. This is a very interesting stat. One in five of middle school students are concerned that their parents are using too many substances or drinking too much alcohol, and wish they would use less. Third one down is marijuana, and as you all know, marijuana's decriminalized now, and marijuana's going to be coming more into our community with medical marijuana. We already have 47% of high school students using marijuana, up from 42% in 2009, and we in the public health community are quite concerned that this statistic's going to go higher over the next five or 10 years, hopefully not. Heroin, and oxycontin, and opiates, the difference between them and smoking and marijuana is that they kill quite quickly. So we had 10 deaths from Revere residents from overdoses in 2008. Our fire department has been doing an outstanding job delivering Narcan on the scene and saving a lot of lives. But basically, this is a very quick killer, and heroin is the top reason for substance abuse treatment admissions coming out of Revere. So I think I went the wrong way on that one. So crime and violence is, is kind of a mixed story, so a lot less concerned about crime and violence than substance abuse in Revere, although, as you all know, they're quite linked. There's a quote here from a Revere resident, "Revere is a pretty nice area for an urban area to live in. I strongly dislike those who think that the influx of immigrants is making it less safe. I disagree. I think junk food, family feuds, and corruption are the main problems." That's one quote. Quote up at the top, "I sometimes fear for safety in Revere." On the right, you see stats about crime, and actually, crime in a number of different indicators, such as drug-related crime, auto vandalism, auto theft, assault, they're actually down, so, so there's some nice downward trends in that. But we are seeing gangs in the school. 9% of Revere high school students are somewhat involved with a gang. That's higher than the Massachusetts rate of 7%. And I think we would all agree that we would want that rate to be 0%. I think I'm taking too much time, so I'm just going to highlight a little less. There's some great numbers in your, in your handouts here. So obesity, the big stat is that 44% of Revere students are overweight or obese, and that's higher than the mass average of 34%. So this is a big wave of illness and disease that's coming to Revere over the next 10, 20, 30 years, as these young people progress forward, if nothing's done, and develop diabetes and hypertension and heart disease and those illnesses. So that's all I'll say about this slide, but there's more data that, that's interesting. But in the interest of time, I'll move forward. Mental health, so mental health access is a big problem in Revere. It's a big problem throughout the United States, throughout the state. One of the problems with it is insurance carve-outs. So as a physician, I'll identify a patient with anxiety or depression, I'll try to refer them down the hall to our psychiatrist, and oop, no can do, because the insurance won't cover it. So, so there are access problems with mental health, and some of mental health goes with social connectedness. So we looked at some social connectedness data. 38% of Revere residents surveyed know all or most of their neighbors by first names, and that's a little bit lower than Charlestown, a little higher than Chelsea. So we're, we're not always seeing good social connectedness, which can be a preventive factor for mental health. So youth issues, what kind of stands out, what really is, is very impressive, so Revere has had a lot of teen births. So if you look at the Revere blue bar there, it's twice as high approximately as Boston, and two and a half times as high as the state. So we're, we're working hard with the School Based Health Center, with our adolescent programs, to try to decrease that. Some of the other stats on the page, Revere high school graduation rate, 70%. I know the school department's working really hard to get that up. It's a tough state. It's a tough stat to get up, but basically, teens need to stay in school, get a good education, keep themselves from getting pregnant, and go on to college and have a better life. So, I'll stop now. I've got, I don't know if you want me to take questions now, or you want Kitty to finish first.
Everyone presents and maybe take questions at the end.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm delighted to be here with you this evening, and I want to talk about what we're going to do about the issues that you just heard. But before I begin, I want to say thank you, because Revere Cares has been in the community for 16 years, and together, the City Council, the school committee, the schools, all of the city departments, community providers, residents have been working, and you've made a difference. When you look at the data, and particularly around substance abuse and underage drinking, you can see that the work that you, time you've invested, the energy and the money that you've invested in this has made a difference. So, now it's time to embark on a new chapter. The first thing we're going to talk about is priorities and how we set them. From the forum, we asked folks to look at six posters. They looked at them. They listened to discussion, and then they ranked which ones they thought were the most important. The Expanded Steering Group, or the Assessment Committee as we're calling it, reviewed the input from the community, along with need, will readiness, potential impact, need for additional response, resources. And from that, they came up with three priorities. Substance abuse prevention, which, as you know, we've been working on for 16 years. They added to it, because of the public safety concern, gang violence. They came up with continuing to work on food and fitness with a greater focus on the corner store initiative and the eating environment. All of you know the food and fitness as Revere on the Move. And then they decided to initiate a new initiative, Healthy Relationships, with a focus on teen pregnancy, relationship violence, and age of initiation of sexual activities. Revere Cares, in response to the assessment committee's planning process, revised its goal, and Revere Cares' new goal is to improve the well-being of Revere residents by preventing substance abuse and monitoring healthy eating, active living, and healthy relationships. In the area of substance abuse, we will continue our social marketing efforts in the Power of Action, aimed towards parents, and Above the Influence campaign aimed towards youth. We will be developing a regional plan to prevent misuse of opiates and overdoses, and for those of you who don't know, the city has just received an award from the Department of Public Health to mentor its neighbors, Chelsea, Winthrop, and Saugus, in opiate overdose prevention. And all of us know, when it comes to substance abuse, there are no borders, and so the better our neighbors are doing with the problem, the better we will do with the problem. We will expand the Power of No Club. I'm sure all of you are familiar with the Power of No Club at the high school. We now have one at the middle school, and we will have two additional Power of No Clubs at the other middle school. So, now we will have the Power of No Club at every secondary school in Revere. We will continue to support substance abuse prevention and treatment services, such as North Suffolk's Mental Health Resource Center, and we will continue with educational events, such as the Recovery Walk, the Revere Beach Memorial, the Pledge Drive, and I'm sure all of you are very familiar with those events and activities. Many of you have participated. In our Healthy Eating Initiative, we are in the process of establishing neighborhood groups in several of the neighborhoods, and eventually, we hope to have them in every neighborhood, and those groups will address the physical environment as well as the eating environment, excuse me, the food environment. We are working with schools and after-school programs, whoops, okay. We are working with school and after-school programs to strengthen physical fitness and nutrition education. We're working to expand school, walk-to-school programs, community garden, adopt-a-park, and urban trails. We're working to establish a corner store initiative. We've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce in beginning a healthy dining initiative in Revere, working to strengthen the farmer's market. And for those of you who don't know, there's a new location this year at Wonderland, a new time. It will be 3:00 to 7:00, and it will start earlier. It will start June 20th, so a week from Thursday will be the first farmer's market. And then we're working with the schools to improve school breakfast, lunch, and snack Our Healthy Relationship and Violence Prevention. This initiative will address, as I said earlier, initiation of early sexual activity, sexually transmitted diseases, teen pregnancy, and relationship violence. We're beginning with what is easy, and that is to develop a comprehensive out-of-school plan for middle and high school youth, and the adoption of a citywide youth asset development model. In the, probably the second two years, we'll work on curriculum issues and develop a social marketing campaign, and in the last years of this strategic plan, we will address gaps in prevention and intervention services. This next slide is the slide that shows all of our entire strategic plan. That that is shaded in dark colors are common to all three initiatives. Those that are in light are particular, related to that particular initiative. You will notice across the top is alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. The second one is healthy eating and active living, and the third, healthy relationship. And along the side are the strategies, policy and enforcement, education, and community awareness, services and programs, and collaboration, and capacity. Those strategies are used across all three initiatives as well. MGH and various, from various funds, has committed approximately $160,000 a year more to try to support this plan, and is working on additional fundraising efforts. As always, we will, it's not a Revere Cares presentation without us asking you to participate, and we'll hope you'll become involved or continue to be involved. Our meeting schedule is on our website. You can contact myself, or Katie, or Sylvia, if you're interested in talking about any of the initiatives, and if you're interested in any of the data. You will find Leslie Aldrich's contact information in the report that you have, and you can contact her. You know, I urge you to check out our Facebook page, there's always interesting input from the community. In the community, we're hoping folks will apply for the mini-grants that we have under the Revere on the Move, and at the middle school and high school level, we're urging everybody to make sure that kids get that little extra push towards joining Power of No Club. You know, it's really great to see that we have a Power of No Club graduate as a member of Revere City Council, and hopefully someday, we have a lot more. On behalf of Mass General and Revere Cares, thank you, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you all for your presentations tonight. This was really a great opportunity for not only the council to learn more about these programs, but for our community too as well, and I think that these are all really important initiatives, and your presence in the community is really outstanding, as well as in the school system, so I really commend you on that. And I know that the entire council, I'm sure, is eager to thank you and commend you on all of these efforts as well, but in the essence of time, I would ask if anyone has any important questions that they'd like to ask? No? Well, thank you so much. At this time, we're going to take a brief recess. Thank you. (applause)[1790.65]